Alright, everybody, it is 5:45. We'll call this meeting to order. Thanks for being here tonight at our special board meeting of October 27, 2025. We'll start with the roll call.
Amy Riddles-Wanson.
Here.
Abe Smith.
Here.
Dominique Stewart.
Here.
Rachel Henderson.
Here.
Dale Dalkey.
Here.
Amber Kersting.
Here.
Emily Hines.
Here.
Michelle Woodbury.
Here.
Angela Wall.
Here.
We have a quorum. Let's stand for political leaders.
The United States of America, and to be qualified for which its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our mission statement? "The school district of the Menominee area by embracing the unique means and using the strengths of our diverse community is dedicated to preparing all students to become lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens." Are there any changes to the agenda order tonight? Seeing none. We have one commendation tonight. I'm going to read this, sitting here, using the microphone, and then stand up and have you come forward. This is for Victoria Johansson, for her outstanding dedication and initiative in supporting our students and school community. "This Johansson was instrumental in raising funds and securing grant support for the recent playground addition at River Heights. Through her commitment to student well-being, she helped bring life to a space that promotes active play, inclusion, and joyful learning for all children. The Borhans have extended our heartfelt appreciation to Victoria for her exceptional efforts and lasting contribution to the students and families of River Heights Elementary." Alright, and tonight we have a special highlight on youth.
Thank you, Rachel, and it's my pleasure to introduce Natasha Beatty. Ms. Beatty is our English language learner's teacher at Menominee Middle School, and she's going to go ahead and take it away. So Ms. Beatty, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. I'm Natasha Beatty, and I'm here tonight with Linda, one of our bilingual mom culture educators, and with Seth Kryvik. He teaches the Menominee Middle School Multicultural Club with me. We run it together, and we have several students with us, too. And what we want to share with you is a great resource. We have the Mom Cultural Heritage Trunk. This trunk was originally compiled by Kim DePranger in Eau Claire, Wisconsin, in 1999, and purchased by the Menominee area school. But the way the teachers of English learners use it in our district, we create displays with the beautiful information, and we also use it to teach about the culture and heritage of one of our largest groups of students, the Mom Americans. Inside the trunk, you'll find authentic cultural items along with clear information explaining the significance of each item and how it is traditionally used. So, for example, this is about, you know, the food, and then there's all kinds of readings and information about it. And then there's also photographs, okay, that shows how you prepare special dishes. So, for every topic in the trunk, there are words and photographs and then items, authentic items. So, some of the parts of mom culture that the trunk covers are the history of the mom people, facts about shamanism, the traditional religion, the mom language, books and storytelling tradition, traditional games and sports, and traditional arts like traditional musical instruments, the eh, which you dance while you play it. We'll try to show you a picture. The mouth harp, the traditional sewing, embroidery, and story cloths, also called pao. Delicious mom foods, including sticky rice in April, festivals that the moms celebrate, and the beautiful clothing worn first such as Mom New Year. So how about if I have people with me? Come forward. Yeah, just come right up here and show us. Do you want to stand up and show the things that we have? So she's holding some of the traditional, and he has the traditional flute. These are two more, the traditional games. He's got the, um, some of the sewing, and you probably have to turn the pace just a little too. So they're wearing some of their beautiful traditional clothes and a traditional necklace. Thank you. And then he's holding, this is some information about shamanism, and here we slide over. This is a large story cloth that actually tells the story of escaping from Laos across the Mekong River into Thailand, the refugee camps. So these are hand-sewn, and this is one that shows daily life in Laos and Thailand in the jungles before they had to leave because of the aftermath with the Vietnam War. Alright, so Linda and I have also used all of these beautiful things. At summer school, we taught a class, Intro of Mom Language and Culture, and many of our mom students participated because most of them cannot read and write in mom. They speak some and understand some. So this just shows how they enjoy trying things on. We tried some of the sewing. Uh, this side just has pictures of Mom New Year. This is the Mom New Year, a scout. They have it every year, and lots of our students and their families attend us, and the ELT we like to go to, and our families are so wonderful to us. They dress us all up in the beautiful clothes, and there's delicious food there, too, in case you're wondering. Alright, so let me just finish what I wrote. So we incorporated all the Mom Cultural Heritage Trunk items into our lessons, so we had authentic items for hands-on learning tools to bring the mom culture to life for our students. Some examples, we show and explain, and they got to try on traditional clothing and artifacts. We shared stories and background information about mom history, and we were able to demonstrate games, and they got to try out some of these games, and we did some of the sewing. And we used the trunk materials to spark discussions about cultural identity and heritage. And because we have these beautiful things, it makes the lessons more engaging and meaningful. So it helps us make interactive visual lessons that are more memorable and more tangible, and it's a fabulous resource to also teach the mom American children and youth about their own heritage, which not all of them know a lot. It helps us celebrate the diversity of language and cultures we have in Menominee. So going forward, we'd like to make this trunk available for checkout by other teachers in our district as well. And this trunk inspired me to write a grant from Dunn County to create a similar trunk for our Latino and Hispanic students, and we hope to present that trunk to you at a later date. That is all that we have.
Thank you so much. Thanks to everybody, all the students and teachers who are able to be here to present this. This is a wonderful resource.
If you have any questions, we can try and see.
Oh, does anyone have a question?
Go ahead. That is a wealth of information.
I know, it's a lot.
It's engaging and super hands-on. I love that. Is it third grade still that we teach actually a unit of mom history?
You know what? I am not certain.
Trying to say yes. Do the third grade teachers, are they aware of this trunk?
I do not think so. We found it on a shelf in a school.
Wow.
And then we pulled it out to use for ELL because we have a lot of mom students, so.
Okay, let's have a try.
We use it to set up displays. They set one up at River Heights during Mom Heritage Month, and we set one up at Menominee Middle School around Mom New Year, and we use it, and we used it at summer school also. We've used it in the classroom to teach students about their culture. But yeah, it would be available to third grade teachers. I don't think they're going to necessarily know what ours is. I think it got kind of lost in time.
I would encourage you to present to our grade three teachers so that they're aware of all of this, and you could be their leader. Great job. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? I also just wanted to say, I heard from some people in my home, that the Intro of Mom Language and Culture was like one of their favorite classes. Not me, mostly because of the angles, but.
Yeah, that is good. It was a lot of fun.
I was grateful to have that opportunity.
Thank you.
Would it be okay if we keep that on display for this week at the AIC?
Yes, yes, that's fine.
Okay, so for anybody who wants.
Just right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so if anybody wants to look at it, you can either, you know, take a look at it tonight, or if you want to come back during office hours, we'll leave it on this week.
We actually have a slideshow about introduction to mom culture and heritage past and present that we prepared that we've presented as a PD to teachers before, and we can share the link if, you know, people are interested.
Yeah, I think you could have Joe share with all of us. Wonderful.
Okay, I'll share with him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have Community Communications. We have two speakers tonight. First is Josie Kilman.
Hello, my name is Josie Kilman, and I am from here. Dr. Pudowski and members of the board.
Kilman, can you hold on just one second? Turn up the microphone.
Oh.
We'll turn it up. Just wait one second. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear better now?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Pudowski and members of the board. Back to basics and back to truth. A history lesson tells us that the New England River was used to teach Americans to read from 1619 until as late as 1930. The primary reason for teaching citizens to read was so that they could read the Bible and know the truth. Now, the Bible has been taken out of the schools, and much information that is now given as fact are not facts, but rather policies that teach a secular ideology contrary to the Judeo-Christian beliefs that our country was built on. Now, elementary teaches that right is wrong and wrong is right in regards to LGBTQ ideology. In this ideology, sexual perversion are called moral. They are not. How can our little children know when they are being taught a lie? They are being groomed to accept lies that could cause them a world at birth. Remember Chloe Cole? Rainbows without a Noah's Ark have been displayed on bulletin boards contrary to the truth of the Bible and again pushing an LGBTQ ideology. How can a little child know what truth is? Remember, the separation of church and state argument was to keep the state out of the church, not to keep the church out of the state. The state, public schools, needs the church to shine the light of truth into it. Now, moving to the Menominee Middle School and high school. Here, children begin to develop critical thinking. I remember what Britain's strictest headmistress Bill Bolson said. "We must arm your students with loads of knowledge, with points of view from every side, and trust them to draw right conclusions." When we ask, where did the world come from? Do we teach the theory of evolution? It took millions of years alongside biblical accounts of God spoke and it was done in six days. What does your critical thinking tell you? What about civics and patriotic Americanism? Do we teach the facts? Our Constitution is very Christian principles. It is a gem of a document. We are a country of laws. These laws protect life, liberty, freedom of speech, freedom of worship, and the right to bear arms, et cetera. We know that all men are created equal and with a tendency to mistrust and treat each other. We need a government to keep us safe. Our proper government has proven to be the vessel of earth, and our students should know that. We can look at Marxists, communists, socialists, and Nazis to see how every other ideology failed. Just look at China, Mao Zedong, Russia, Stalin, Germany with Hitler, and Venezuela, Hugo Chavez. Millions of the citizens died. Students should all learn from these failed and deadly examples. Modern civics has other examples. The Supreme Court of the USA got it wrong on the abortion issue. Millions died. Thankfully, that has been corrected. Abortion is murder, killing innocent. Careful punishment is not repunishing the guilty. Know the difference and teach the truth.
Hey, our next speaker tonight is Mike Cooper.
Good evening, Mike Cooper, Menominee, Wisconsin. What do you know about this all day today? Two weeks ago, I shared a thirty rule ruling about taking unacceptable books off the shelves. Tonight, I will share with you additional reasons to clear up. Eric Kaufman, professor of politics at the University of Buckingham in the United Kingdom, released a report titled "The Decline of Trans and Queer Identity Among Young Americans: An Analysis of College-Age Students of the United States Using Seven Data Pools." The report was published by the Center of Heather Docks Social Science, which describes itself as promoting open inquiry in a progressive academia. The report indicates that transgender identification among college students is half of what it was when the trend peaked in 2023, having dropped to four percent from seven percent. The report suggests there has been a return of heterosexual identification as well, although numbers remain lower than in 2020. The number of those who identify as gay and lesbian have remained relatively stable. This suggests that gender and sexual nonconformity will continue to fall, Kaufman wrote. Kaufman likened the reduction in transgender and non-binary identities to a fad. The fall of trans and queer seems most similar to the fading of a fashion or trendy road. It happened largely independently of shifts in political beliefs or social media use, though improved mental health played a role. Less anxious and especially depressed students are linked to a smaller share identifying as trans, queer, and bisexual. Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Alright, motion by Amy, second by Amber. Tonight, we have approval of the River Heights Safety Drill and approval of a recommended adjustment to our 2025-26 staffing plan to replace a major maintenance position that will become vacant at the end of the year due to our retirement with an assistant director, Billy Brown's position. Any questions on the order discussion on the consent agenda? Alright, seeing none, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. And we have no content in the personnel consent agenda tonight, so on to our action agenda. First, we have a renewal of the 2026, excuse me, 2026 renewal of our district health insurance plan. Do you want, oh, I guess first we should have a motion to approve the health insurance renewal.
Amy, someone, sorry. I am second.
Alright, motion by Amy, second by Emily. Alright, now, do you want to give us a quick overview?
Sure. The board reviewed this two weeks ago, and nothing's changed since then except for the fact that we did have a health insurance committee meeting. Sam or Dale, do either of you have any comments about that health insurance meeting that you want to share with the board before they vote?
No, I think everything went very well, and everybody was on board with, you know, with the recommendation, so.
And we have started our benefit presentations around the school district. Sam, Eric, and I visit every school and go through the benefit presentation. And again, that presentation was a recommendation of the Health Insurance Committee about a decade ago, and it's been very successful. I think, you know, making sure that our employees know what the benefits are and how they work is something that you would think that is easy, but it's not, you know, when you have all these different schools and different employment groups, but I think everyone's doing a real nice job, and it's really nice to have a yearable not anticipating changes to the plan design.
I'm sure there's been some trials through the new process and all, but we did hear at least one very positive report from the staff. Do you know what the clinic system that was being piloted last year, is that working out?
I think that's what Dale's referring to. We've heard lots of positive feedback on that, and people telling us that they've been able to access care, healthcare that maybe they haven't been able to in the past because of total costs. And availability appointments has been either same day or next day. We feel that it has been an incredible addition to the plan, and we're very happy with Anovia and the process that we have.
The nearsite clinic, where you're referring to as our magic bullet for this whole system. And it's funny, but it's true, because if we're able to provide access, and we know how difficult access has become in the Chippewa Valley, just to try to get in and see a doctor in many cases, by having our nearsite clinic that is dedicated to Menominee, our employees have so much better access, usually it's within 24 hours. The other piece to it is that the cost for a lot of routine stuff is a fraction, a small fraction of what it is. So what we're really encouraging is, you know, we understand that some people may want to continue to see their primary doctor that they have seen for a long time, but when it comes to the lab work, I mean, it is a fraction. So we just started it in August, and we think there's a lot of potential. We're also very impressed with Anovia as our partner. It was kind of building the plane as we were flying it, so there were a few hiccups, but they've been super responsive. The communication's been good, and to have the owner of Anovia be very involved, and really Sam can reach out at a moment's notice, we really feel good with the customer support that we've gotten.
The other piece of the news that we heard at the meeting is that they are probably going to have a clinic in the area, and with the number of staff members that we have that live in the area, that's going to be a little benefit. It's very impressive we manage to keep the cost stable. I think, thinking like kind of from the HR perspective, I'm guessing we have a lot of employees who are also maybe on dad's care right now. Maybe they're working part-time, maybe they are at home in several jobs, maybe it's a parent, you know, with other family situations, et cetera. I, you know, we, it appears that the dad's care costs are going to go up for, and that is a tragedy for a lot of people in our community. From the perspective of this institution, though, it seems like this might be an opportunity if there's ways to adjust work plans so that people can be in that full-time role and maybe be on our very, you know, relatively affordable and very stable health insurance. That might be a way to help retain people in a time when they're going to be desperate for additional revenue.
That is something that we, that Sam and I have talked about. The good news is, is that there is a ton of opportunity for promotion in our school district, and if someone is looking to go from part-time to full-time, there are many opportunities. I don't know that we would be recommending changes in benefit structure for different classifications of employee, especially with the Affordable Care Act and all the regulations that come with it. However, I would say more the ability to promote would be what we would suggest, and there are a number of employees that, due to a number of reasons, they cannot or do not want to be a full-time employee, so, or they don't want to be offered benefits based on their family situation with their spouse. So I think we have a pretty good system in place, but your point is well-taken. I think it's something we'll have to keep our eye on.
Yeah, just as a part of the overall package of employment, right, it's also, these incentives, we call them benefits, right, and they are benefits in the sense that they also are, you know, it is helping compensate our employees in a way that can benefit their life, so.
So it sounds like a couple of the benefits presentations have already happened apart, so I'm curious if apart from the Health and Medical Committee, if you had anything, any kind of immediate feedback on the plan from those opportunities?
Well, I know we had one just this morning over at Wacan Elementary School. One of our teachers shared a very positive experience that her family has had with the nearsite clinic. That's the one that comes to my mind. Sam, I don't know if I can, or Eric, Ben is registering with you right now.
I guess that we continue to hear, one of the other pieces that we've added is some care navigation, which is accepting our care from maybe a more expensive provider to a, like a center of excellence is what they call it, and it's, it's less expensive for our plan, it's less expensive for the individual, and there's frequently an incentive involved with that, and so we've heard a lot of good feedback on that as well. The change that we've had in this last year has required our staff to take out a little bit more responsibility with the plan and kind of looking into things, and this is one of those pieces. But I think that they have been pleasantly surprised with the outcome of that and the care that they're receiving and understanding, saving them money and saving our plan money. So we continue to hear positives about both the care navigation and the nearsite clinic.
I thought of one more thing that Amy kind of reminded me of with your question, and that was, I was concerned about the part-time employees and whether they could somehow be covered. And with the help of Lisa and Sam, they put together a really nice report of part-time employees, and like Joe mentioned, some of them don't want to be on the insurance plan, some of them have a significant to others that are on the plan, and the piece that they put together for me really made me feel confident that the way it's going is just fine. Like Joe said, they would like to have a full-time job, which is a lot of opportunities.
Great. Any additional questions or discussion on the healthcare plan renewal? Alright, seeing none, let's vote. That motion passes unanimously. Next, we have an action to approve the final budget provisions for 2024-25. I'll entertain a motion. Second. Motion by Amy, second by Michelle, Andrew, Michelle. Any questions, questions and discussion on the final budget revisions? Is this exactly the case that was that correct?
Yes, there are no changes.
Is there anything you want to say?
Uh, no, just from last time, it's, yeah, just an update of the budget and no changes since last time.
Great. Any questions or discussion? Alright, let's vote. Alright, motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have an action to approve the adoption of the 2025-26 budget.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's get a motion first.
So, Dale.
Second.
Alright, motion by Dale, second by Dominique. Now.
Sorry about that. Eric's going to share some details, but before he does that, I just want to set the stage a little bit, and I know we had this on the agenda. And I know we had this on the agenda last meeting about the timeline that was used to create the budget. And if you all remember, the board was provided with a preliminary budget last summer, and I know you spent a lot of time looking through it, there's a lot of discussion, and the preliminary budget was approved. But we all know that we don't know information at that point. We don't know our September enrollment, we don't know our state aid, the property valuation, so many factors that are unknown. Between June and then our annual meeting in August, we continue to track and it's all projection based though, because until we get to the school year and have our third Friday count, our whole revenue limit is dependent on enrollment. So that, that's the first piece. And then also the state aid certification in October, and then the property valuation is in October. So there's a lot of work that Eric and his team did. We feel really good about the budget that's being recommended and I think especially with all the changes at the state level, with an increase to the revenue limit without a corresponding increase to state aid, the very wise decision the board made at the end of last school year to make a transfer into the capital improvement fund. We're one of the small percentages of school districts that actually had a little bit more state aid. So great job by the board. You set us up for a good budget. And with that, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just going to briefly summarize some of the reports that I, the many reports that I handed over to you. So I'm going to first summarize items from the notes and talk about the most significant changes from the preliminary budget, which was approved in June. First one is the state equalization aid that only increased by .57 over last year, and that was approximately $900,000 less than projected in the preliminary budget. SDMA was, was however, just one of 21% of school districts in the state of Wisconsin that received more equalization aid than the prior year. Property valuations, property values within the school district of SDMA increased by Included in that is 2% from new growth or new buildings within the school district. So this exceeded the preliminary budget estimate of 4.71%. Statewide however, property values rose an average of just over 8%. Long-term debt, the preliminary budget included an additional $3 million to the levy to accelerate long-term debt repayment. This was reduced by $1 million to $2 million, which is the same amount that we did last year in the budget in order to maintain the mill rate at 560, which we will maintain for the second consecutive year, and also to accommodate a 41% increase in the school voucher portion of the levy. So the total levy in the proposed budget is 18.8 million, which is slightly higher than the preliminary budget projection of 18.5 million and is above last year's levy of 17.8 million. So the, as I said, the proposed mill rate is $5.60. That's exactly equal to last year's mill rate and also just higher than the estimate for the preliminary mill rate, which was $5.59. Additionally...
Just a quick question.
Yeah?
Just to clarify, so the 18.8 million total tax levy, that includes the 1.4 million voucher, or is that on top of that?
No, that, that includes that. Later on, when I go over the revenue limit worksheet, so if, yeah, item 10, H and I, in that is...
Okay. Thanks.
Eric, why did I, why did our state levy increase whereas most schools didn't?
For a variety of factors, but we, so we had shared costs that increased that amount. So we're a district that if we increase our shared cost, we do get more equalization aid, and that was certainly probably a major part of it.
And Dale, that's what I was referring to with the transfer that the board approved right before, or right at the end of last year. And that transfer into the long-term capital plan allowed us to increase our share, which then allowed us to capitalize on state aid.
Okay, I'll continue. So due to the increased amount over the years that we have put into Fund 39, paying off debt early, that action over the years has saved the district and the taxpayers $1.35 million over the years. As mentioned before, health insurance premiums will remain flat this year. There is a decrease in the Fund 27 transfer that was due to the budget having a higher reimbursement rate from the state over previous years. However, our expenses due to open enrollment out also increased from last year because in the budget, though, our case expenses, since we have more enrollment out, will increase over last year. Next, just going over, so the budget publication sheet, this is the very one-page summary for each of the funds. I know the board has liked it in this format, so I included that this year as well for you to look at. The other ones, the summary and then the various funds, slightly more detailed look, Funds 10 through 80. Those are reports that you've seen in previous years that have been updated for this year. And then the six-year history, just looking at those, the six-year history of membership, equalized value tax levy, our certification and also our mill rate. And then finally, I've included there the revenue limit worksheet, which is what the state provides to work out the mill rate and things like that. And then you can see there was a question about the voucher program, so in, under item 10 and then H and I, those are the levy items that are put into the worksheet in order to, to enter in those voucher amounts.
All right, any questions or discussion for Eric? And also, and then I ask if you have a question, tell us which document you're referencing. So we can all look at the same thing right away. There's a lot of information here. Go ahead.
When I was teeing this off, I, I just want to repeat a couple of things that Eric talked about. The fact that, again, the state put no new state aid into the formula, the fact that ours went up is pretty remarkable. And so, but it was about $900,000 less than what would have been anticipated with a normal state budget. So we had to deal with that. And a lot of schools, I think you're going to see an average increase, probably around 8%. And we were able to keep our mill rate flat. The way we were able to do that was by dropping our long-term debt payment. We were still accelerating, we're doing a great job paying down our long-term debt. We're in a situation where we're going to end up paying down that debt probably two or three years earlier than what was on schedule. So that's saving millions for our taxpayers. But then what we can't control is the private school vouchers. And the total now is over $1 million directly on the tax levy. So when you have $900,000 taken away from state aid, and then you have over $1 million in private school vouchers, to be able to keep our tax rate at 5.6 from last year to 5.6 this year, I really think the board has done a great job with that. So no one likes to see increased taxes whatsoever, but I think in the situation that we're in and how we've been able to handle things, I think the board has a lot to be proud of.
On the voucher topic, I know that Wisconsin Public Education Network has been working on a toolkit that they just released like a month ago that's helping districts to work with the county and other agencies to actually get that listed separately on taxes. So I think we kind of looked into it sometime last year and it didn't seem like it was possible. They'd actually like kind of collected all of the different documents and things, kind of working with this District Chartered State. So, you know, it may be something that we want to look at in the future and think about, is that something we want to pursue? Because that number is growing really fast and it seems to me that, you know, whatever people think about the public versus private, you know, dichotomy of education and so on, like, people should know, I think, people should know where their money's going and as transparently as possible. So maybe in some future meeting, we should recognize that and see if that's something, maybe even get a, get some of the WPEM to maybe summarize the approach they're taking and where it's working and what the hiccups might be.
Do you know off the top of your head about the timelines for that process?
I have no idea. I've just seen the summary page of some of my toolkits.
Go ahead.
I've been working with the Wisconsin Public Education Network, going after their calls and so forth and their things. Chris has some ideas on that, and I put an email into her about that and hope that we can find out more about that and maybe have that on the agenda to discuss at some future meeting. Thank you.
Would the board like to invite, well, I know she's been visiting school boards to talk about that, would it make sense to invite her to a future meeting?
That would be excellent. And it would be like straight up her mouth instead of coming through me and then she gives, that makes sense.
Yes, and then we can address questions directly to her instead of to you from the back there.
But it's been on my mind for a long time.
Yeah, I think let's, I thought I'd generate that down so we can talk about that for an upcoming meeting. Back to this budget, not that we left, but... Say thanks Eric for this level of detail, the summaries, the explanation, really appreciate that.
Not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but we do need to remember this is the first year of the state financial budget. So everyone is anticipating that there's going to be $325 of new revenue per pupil in next year, and to try to manage how that is going to be funded with no additional state aid is really challenging. Now, there has been an adjustment to special education aid, which will help, but in terms of trying to control the tax levy and the mill rate, we were able to pull a lot of strings this year to make that happen. I'm concerned that next year will be more difficult.
So right now, what we're looking at is approval of a balanced budget for next year that includes a flat tax levy or a flat mill rate?
Yes.
And I think what you're saying is, we're not going to have both, we can't count on having both of those things a year after that.
Correct.
Is it worth considering putting, speaking of future, adding stuff to future agendas, is it worth putting a more in-depth discussion on, you know, a two to three-year projection of budget and fund balance?
We are planning on having our January mid-year budget hearing, and oftentimes that is, you know, essentially what that hearing turns into. Perhaps we could do that and then if we feel like additional discussions needed, maybe follow up the mid-year hearing with another agenda item. Because again, we get more information by January, which really helps with projections. I don't know that doing it immediately between now and January would, would be real helpful at this point.
Do, does anyone have thoughts or questions on that? Or questions or discussionary over the budget documents? Go ahead.
I agree that within a few years, it's going to be very awful. And I think I agree also that January's direction would be good.
Other questions or discussion on the approval of the 2025-26 budget? All right, great, let's vote. So it may seem like we just did this, but now we need a motion to approve the certification of the 2025-26 tax levy. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to agree. Second, Andrew.
Great. So this is exactly what we just talked about, but it's a set for motion, specifically on the tax levy of $18,21,314. And I guess that's it. Right, with results in a mill rate of $5.60. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote. Sorry, I closed myself on the board docs. Onto our discussion agenda. First up, we have a review of the Menominee High School course offering timeline.
First of all, I failed to thank Sam and Eric for their work on the health insurance renewal. It's a ton of work. And then obviously the work that Eric has done with the budget. But I also do want to thank Eric for his work on the budget, but not just Eric, but his whole team at the district office and frankly, the administration, because the building, it all starts with the building principals, the classroom teachers and the department directors, working on those budget builders, identifying what is needed. So it is a very collaborative effort. Thank you very much for your work. Now, to the next agenda item, I want to thank Brian especially, but also Casey Drake and Samantha Hoyt for this staffing and course offering timeline. This timeline is very similar to what has been used in previous years, and you can see we're already well into the planning process for the 2026-2027 school year. So it is recommended that we continue to follow this timeline that starts with identifying the courses that students need, and then based on our enrollment and the course requests, we then work on a staffing plan. But it all starts with the staffing, or the course offerings first, then the staffing, and you can see that there's a lot of work that'll be done by the board, especially when we get past January into February, March and April. Brian, is there anything you wanted to point out in this timeline?
Out of this, I will serve some questions.
You've seen this now several years in a row, but it's a pretty effective way of managing this huge task. Any suggestions for changes? Or questions?
It's really, even though we have seen this timeline every year, it's helped a little look at it again, so thank you for that. Any questions or discussion? So the next step on this, we will be looking at new course proposals in November, if there are any, and then we start the staffing discussion in December. All right. Next up, we have a review of quarterly progress on the district work plan. So folks have the district work plan in front of them, hopefully, and Dr. Dasey has pointed out, there's a highlighted item in each, under each pillar, and that's what you're going to focus on tonight, right?
Yeah, thanks Rachel. And the document that board members have, this is the working copy of the work plan. So you can see it's actually a live Google Doc that the principals, the district directors and I worked from. And this is the first quarterly update, so everything is in red. We tried to color code it so you can see the progress throughout the year. After tonight, I will take a snapshot of this and load it into board docs, so we have a archive of where we were at at this time. But as, as recent as today, there were additions to this plan, pretty small today, but you can see, so what this is, is that we have our strategic plan that has five, five main pillars. And the work plan that the board approved last summer has all these different goals and activities that are underneath those five pillars. In fact, there were 33 different goals that we are working towards, which is a lot. Thankfully, we have an awesome team. A lot of this work is done by our teachers, certainly a lot of it is done by our principals and our district directors. Instead of going through each of the 33 goals, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the directors to help cover one goal in each pillar, but we'll certainly be willing to take questions or discuss any of the other goals that you want to talk about. be willing to take questions or discuss any of the other goals that you want to talk about tonight. So leading off, um, and batting, or leading off and playing left field, um, will be Brian. He'll be talking about pillar one, preparing our schools. Brian, go ahead.
All right, first of all, clarify, that was a baseball reference, sorry. All right. I know I didn't catch that, it was baseball. All right, so, uh, other pillar one, uh, the, the goal that I'm going to touch base on briefly here is, um, one where, uh, we are, uh, working with a faculty committee this year to develop and communicate some supports to families, uh, with the goal of improving student readiness for 5K. Uh, and in a nutshell, what that is, is taking a look at what happens, um, before students enter kindergarten, five-year-old kindergarten, um, whether that's in partnership with four-year-old kindergarten, um, early childhood special education, or, um, students who the first, um, entrance into our, uh, school district buildings is as a 5K student. So, um, there's not any one, um, access point, uh, into that school age experience, uh, but what you can see is, uh, the progress that we have made so far, um, you know, and the piece that I really want to highlight is, um, starting with our 4K partners, each year we do a questionnaire with families, um, and registration, which is referred to as the ages and stages, um, questionnaire. Uh, and, um, with that, um, a trend that we've noticed, um, has to do with finding motor skills and, um, how that looks different now today than it did ten years ago, fifteen years ago. Um, so our pupil services team, um, along with our 4K staff, uh, and our curriculum office has begun the process of, um, putting together some resources to provide to families at the time of enrollment, um, to, um, help identify what are some things that families can be doing, uh, to help with both an awareness of what type of fine motor skills are necessary successful, um, but then also how to help build those. That's just one example of, um, some work that we're doing, um, and, you know, what we'll see when families enroll in 4K next school year, um, before they even set foot is, uh, into one of our programs, resources that they can take with them at that time of enrollment, uh, because what we're finding is families, um, are really apt to play a, a, a vital role, um, but just an awareness of what are some of those skills that they're looking for, so.
And just as a follow-up, I, I really like some real-life examples for takeaway. Tony, I get to put you on the spot, but could you talk about the scissors thing a little bit?
Oh, like, the scissors like parents, largely we hear from parents that they don't let their kids have scissors, um, which I totally agree, I did not like just put scissors like on the table then walk away, but there are some tasks that I think families could do supervised, um, but it's kind of that awareness, I think we are, um, seeing largely that those fine motor skills are not built up and they're needed when kids start school, um, even just some pencil to grab, even hand strength.
Oh yeah, that was the other one, which I, that one floored me, but if you think about it, it, it makes some sense. Kids nowadays, and when I say kids, but a trend we're seeing are less and less children that can even hold a pencil or a pen. You know, it's all iPad, it's all phone, um, you know, very few kids are actually like writing a letter to their grandparents or whatever it might be. Um, but, but, or, or yeah, or, or playing, I mean, I know you're joking about it, or playing out in the yard, hitting each other with sticks or whatever, and it's, we're seeing it, it's, it's impacting the fine motor skills of these kids. And it doesn't make them bad or anything, it just means that as a school district, we need to adopt, we need to adapt, and we need to, you know, help these kids prepare. And I think for a lot, it was a shock to me, and I think when you think about families, a lot of families probably don't really think about that, so maybe just calling some attention to it could really help these kiddos get started earlier and, um, not have those deficits. Thanks Brian, any, any other questions on pillar one? Okay, then, if I can find my spot, uh, pillar two is all about supporting our students, and, um, to do pillar two will be Tonya.
Yep.
So Tonya, go ahead.
So, um, as you guys know, October is National, um, Bullying Prevention Month, so that's the highlight there, although we highlight, um, that in October is, this is continuous work that we do all year. Unity Day was last Wednesday, so they, um, all our schools did some activities. If you were in our school, you probably saw some orange happening, um, throughout the buildings, um, and even up here, we have staff wearing orange, um, as awareness for that. Um, but we do activities throughout the year, um, and we take responses to bullying very seriously, um, and so, uh, like our elementary, we do have a bullying prevention, um, unit as part of our kit, as part of our second best curriculum, um, so we're utilizing that. Um, I do also want to take note of the first item on, in this pillar, which is about the connections we make with students. Um, we've been doing that, I think this is our third year that we've really kind of had this as part of our work plan. Um, if you remember the survey that we saw the results of, and that did, I think that really was highlighted in our survey, I looked that up, we were at the ninety percentile, which shows that, I mean, we're making a huge effort to make sure students feel connected, um, and it is showing in our results of our survey, and I think when the students are also connected, um, it's also helps with that bullying, because if students feel connected with an adult, um, we hope that that student then would go to that adult and talk about if there were things that were happening that, that they didn't like or felt, um, unsafe at school, that they would have an adult that they could connect with, so.
And to follow up on that, I think we all know that curbing bullying is not just wearing orange for one day in October, and Tonya alluded to that. You know, some of the other things that are listed, the principals did a great job at the start of the school year, um, reviewing the policies and procedures, um, so, so kids know, um, how, first of all, what the expectations are, but then also if there are issues, how to report and, and how to get support. Um, that all starts in the summer when we, as a administrative team, review all the policies and protocols. Um, also, uh, Tony mentioned the curriculum work, um, that's done within the classrooms, uh, but I, I was really impressed, um, with two, two things I wanted to point out. One is at the middle school, um, Mr. Betcher and his team there do a mix it up event, um, where during lunchtime, the kids, you know, sit with different people and it's really promoted, it's a, it's a great activity there, um, to try to foster respectful relationships and, and get the students, um, to see each other as, as human beings. And then also at the high school, our, our new activities director, who is not new anymore, but relatively new, uh, Mr. Riley, um, is working with groups of leaders at the high school, and they created that sportsmanship video, and, uh, even though it's, you know, just a sportsmanship video, the work that goes into thinking about that and then putting it together, um, is kind of the culture that we're trying to, to really work towards. So, uh, great job to everyone who was involved with that. Pillar three is engaging our staff, and our HR director Samantha Hoyt is the perfect person to talk about pillar three.
So the, um, the bullet point that I wanted to highlight tonight was, uh, the compensation committee, um, and so a, uh, the most recent developments with that compensation committee is established, and our first meeting is coming up this Thursday, October thirtieth. Uh, we will be meeting together as a group to talk about expectations, to talk about norms, um, and kind of start going through some of the data that we have. Uh, our, my HR assistant is also gathering, um, salary schedules, teacher salary schedules from the neighboring districts, so we'll have that information that we can kind of start synthesizing and figuring out priorities, um, and then our plan is to have a recommendation for the board, um, at the January twenty-sixth board meeting.
And when Sam talks about gathering data, um, we're fortunate that we have a lot of organizations that are, um, working together, and CISA eleven, um, up in Turtle Lake is one of them. Um, also, we try to get statewide data, but, um, that regional data is very helpful. I can tell you that we're pleased, and when we look at our compensation, there's a lot of good pieces of it, um, but we also know that how things have changed, um, more recently over the last few years, um, with the teacher shortage and with teachers moving from district to district, uh, we know there are some issues that need to be looked at, so, um, we're glad to have that kicked off and started. Any questions on pillar three?
I was just curious, the, um, policy change to allow, right, I think it was obtained to allow, uh, staff to kind of buy personal days with bank, um, sick leave, that's, how is that going, I guess?
Um, great question. Yeah, it's been while, we have, uh, I believe it's five staff members at this point that have requested to exchange some of their paid leave days for personal days. Um, I think it's, it's gone over very well, people are appreciative of being able to do that, um, and it, it is a benefit that, you know, anybody can take advantage of as long as they have the paid leave available, um, however, it does kind of become more of a benefit for those that save their paid leave, um, and maybe are more toward the end of their, um, their career. So it's working out well, um, we've heard good feedback on it, and people are utilizing it, bit of a process for how, uh, people can request that time, and we're, we're working through moving those days over and getting people additional, um, personal days.
Other questions about the pillar four? Go, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, actually that was pillar three, right? Um, so on to pillar four, which is enhancing family and community partnerships. Um, Katie, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, Katie's into this one. I know who Katie is. I was just having a blank about who is going to come to this one. Go ahead Katie, our tech director, Katie.
So yeah, so we have implemented, um, Parent Square this year, so, um, we've been using that communication, principals have all done, um, a test of doing, like, an emergency alert with staff, um, just to make sure everybody's phone numbers are in the way they need to be, et cetera.
Could you speak, just look at the microphone a little better?
Sure. Okay, um, yeah, so principals, um, did the test, um, to double-check that all, um, staff were getting an emergency alerts for their building. Um, we've also created community groups that people can join, so if there's a grandparent or a daycare, um, that needs to know when we're having this snow day to anticipate kids coming their way, um, they can get those alerts at the same time everybody else does. Um, and that's self-managed, so they can enroll or remove themselves at any time. The athletics meeting, um, for Winter Sports is coming up, and so it'll be rolled out, um, to coaches, um, at that time, and we're in the process of investigating, um, possibly, um, moving our website to smart sites. Um, if you've noticed, our current website, you know, probably most people use this, um, to access the site, and it does not, um, do mobile level at all. There's probably a good reason to, um, reevaluate, um, sites, um, but with that integration and looking at the same, um, platform, it would, you know, flashes snow day alert, um, if Joe pushes it out through the communication tool, it also automatically. So there's a lot of nice cross-integration there.
So that would be the website platform is the same system as Parent Square, is that right? Okay, great.
That would, that would, that is under consideration.
So Katie might speak a bit lightly once in a while, but her team is doing heavy lifting. Um, you wouldn't think it would be that much work to develop this Parent Square, um, and our staff has done a good job too, but anytime you implement something this large, there is a lot to do, and one of the biggest things we found is the creation of groups. It, it's pretty easy to have, like, the mass email stuff, you know, okay, every parent in the district gets this, and every community member that signs up gets that, but when we start having, you know, individual teachers using it for individual classes, or coaches, or advisors for sports and activity teams, um, it is a ton of work, and Katie and her team have developed systems where we can use our other software to automatically create a lot of these groups, not all of them, uh, some of them have to be done manually, uh, but that is critical, because of the time it would take to constantly be updating groups as kids move in or move out, or, um, you know, join a team or quit a team, you know, things like that, um, Katie and her team have done a great job of that. Um, we are going to be having a test message coming out this week, uh, test snow day alert, and I'm going to make it very clear that it's just a test, um, but we, we, we do want to do that here in October, knowing that the inclement weather is on its way. Um, hopefully we don't have to use it, um, but we want to make sure that we get it out there so that if people do not receive it, um, more than likely, they do not have their contact information loaded into Skyward Family Access. And, um, by doing the test, we're hoping to catch that stuff ahead of time, so that when we do get to the point where there's a delay or a snow day, or, or even an emergency, that, um, families will at least have had the opportunity to have that test. We're also very excited about, um, updating our website, I know that wasn't a specifically called-out goal in this plan, however, um, as we've gotten into this, uh, we feel that it's a very important piece that is missing, um, from our communication, uh, plan, so even though it's a lot of extra, I, I think, you know, right now, our, our, our work is taking our current site and trying to make our current site as updated and as seamless as possible, because when you do a new website, a lot of what you do is move over hundreds and hundreds of pages on the current website. If we recreate the wheel, I mean, you're talking big investment, whereas if we can take our current site and make it, um, as updated as possible, that gives us a really good starting spot, um, as we move to a new site, so. Continue to work on that, uh, potential rollout, Katie?
Um, depending on doing the survey timeline and making a, a final decision on what platform we go with, um, it is manual, um, so if he's saying like roll over, we literally have to recreate every page that's on our website, um, in a new system, it doesn't just get there. So, um, so it, you know, if, if we have survey results and, and that leads us to believe that this other platform is a good fit, our hope would be, um, to start rolling that out maybe for the start of the next school year.
And I'm glad Katie brought up the survey, because that's also one of the goals, um, in this work plan, is to have a family survey. Uh, we have collected information about how other school districts have utilized family surveys, and what we have found is that most districts utilize family surveys at the end of the school year, and we do want to get feedback though on the website, we don't want to just adopt a website or create a website, uh, without getting feedback about what are the most important parts for family and community, um, because that will have a big impact on how that website is designed. So at first, we were considering consolidating those efforts of having, uh, one survey about the website, and then also include the other information that's important that we want to receive from families, but I think we're going to have to separate it, because we don't want to wait that long to have work done on a website. So you can anticipate a website survey coming out, uh, probably before Thanksgiving, and then our family survey will be coming out more towards the end of the school year. Any questions on pillar four?
That's great to hear. Uh, one comment on the survey on the website, I think, um, my experience is already that using Parent Square, the things I look for on the website are now different. Like, I'm not searching the directory anymore, because I can just like message to teacher, right? So I think that, um, it might be that people's priorities shift about what they actually use the website for, as more and more things are streamlined through Parent Square, which is great.
Thank you.
That's a good point. I wanted to, um, two things, one is, uh, so far, Parent Square for me has been really intuitive, and I've loved it, because I, I have kids in three different schools, and so getting all of that in one place is, has been so great. But is there a way to, I, I feel like, and this maybe ties into the survey piece too, but it's like the people who see the website as working great are probably the people who know how to access the website, the people who say Parent Square is working great for them will be the ones who have figured out the Parent Square things. Is there a way to either offer some additional opportunities for training, for navigation for parents, like, whether there was, uh, or at parent-teacher conferences, just somebody who could be there to say like, are you getting the things that this has a lot of cool capabilities? Do you know about them, are you getting them? And when we're surveying people, is there a way to capture the people who successfully are directing these, these interfaces? Like, I'm not sure we'll get the things that aren't working if it's a self-selecting group of people who are having trouble making them work.
Um, for the first question, I think, um, the difficulty would be a lot of our orientations are in the same night, um, where it's all techy, so we can't necessarily be all the places. Um, we do have quite a few resources and tutorials that are already electronically created for parents that could, um, could be video resources or something that, uh, we could, um, put in like a hydrolinked Google Doc that would be on the same signup pages that people do their, um, orientation questions on, um, to make it easily available, if that makes sense, like, basically they have a video library orientation, um, or I'm sure we could work with buildings to have a location where they just kind of lay out a loop, um, something like that. like that might be the better fit, or that, you know, we've created those things to be able to send to parents if they call us and are struggling with things. I would say as far as communicating, I think, you know, in Parents Square, whether or not they're using the app, they are getting those emails or they're getting it as a text. So I feel like even if they're not interacting with it maybe at the level that you are, where you're like maybe logging in and looking at everything at home, like, like a feed, I think that they are probably getting the information, able to interact with it at a very basic level, at the very least.
And that's a good question, and we'll talk about that while we meet tomorrow with our administrative team. Maybe there's a way to do it on-demand or, or even like a live webinar type of thing, where parents could hop on a Google Meet or something, or whether we do something in-person too, or, you know, it could be for all elementary parents.
Right.
We would probably have a lot of attendance, but even if we got 20 more people, it'd probably be helpful. Thank you.
Additional questions regarding pillar four? All right, on to pillar five.
So the last pillar, pillar five is operating efficiently and effectively, and the goal that I want to highlight is the school safety goal, and I appreciate the work that's been done at the building level. We do have very good school safety plans, but every three years, those plans need to be updated, and those plans, the update starts with an assessment, and all principals have completed their building-level security assessments. The next step that we'll be working on is taking the information from those assessments and then looking at our plans and seeing where any adjustments might need to be made. I'm also pleased that our buildings has completed their school safety drill, and those come to the board, I think you approved the final one tonight. So again, we wish we didn't even have to think about those things, but we know it's real and we know it's important, and our building principals and all of our staff have done a really good job prioritizing school safety. So that kind of does it for the work plan update. I guess, are there any other questions about any of the pillars?
And if there were things that anyone noticed in the goals that weren't highlighted in each section, those are also fair game too, a question. There's a lot to digest here, I really appreciate everybody for, first of all, like I really liked this format of highlighting something, and I think that was a great way to make sure we touched on every pillar, and it was great to hear from all of you, so thanks for being part of that. And it's really nice to see so much red and so much good work. Red is good in this case, so much work being done on this very, very long work plan.
It's twelve pages long, we're only in the first quarter.
That was exactly what I was going to say. I'll play this now and then we'll see how long it gets, but I appreciate it because I like how it flows and like you said, you were going to make it so that it's available so that we can see it as in progress as things change and whatever. I think that is really good.
Thank you. Any, here, any final questions or discussion on the work plan?
I just, I just wanted to say when I, when I went through the work plan and everything that's been done, I was just like, boom, like there's so much in such a short amount of time, so thank you. Good job.
All right, next discussion item is, yeah, discussion of the Wisconsin Association School Board's Board Development Tool. So the, the Board Development Tool from WASD is, we did this last year in the, I can't remember when that we did, I should have checked that. So that was where we did the survey about board, about us, about, you know, how the board is working together, board self-evaluation, and we held a retreat to discuss the results of that. So the question before us is we want to do the same thing again this year. So we did that last year, we had actually not done it the year before, we did do it the year before that. What do folks think about that? Any, any gut reactions right now? I think personally, we had a, it was a really useful thing to do last year, I think we learned a lot. I think the discussion we had from it was really meaningful and helpful. And I think returning to a regular annual schedule, doing that is probably a good routine to get into, even though it does take a little bit of our time. I should have asked this before the meeting, when did we, what month did we do that last year? Yeah. Okay. I don't remember it being cold, so. But I also don't think it was, I don't remember.
I'm not, I'm not sure my memory is really good either.
Yeah.
But I know in the past years, it seemed like we always did it in the spring.
Yeah, yeah, that seems right.
Like, I don't know one month, but sometime in the spring semester.
Yeah, I think the board typically does it before the spring election.
Okay. All right, so we could, if we are, a team nods, I haven't heard anyone say this is a terrible idea, no one to do it. We can work on, as we talk about the agendas for the next couple of meetings, we can work on figuring out the correct time to put this in. Everybody here, so we want to make sure that that's a priority for, for scheduling.
If I could suggest, the survey tool is open, and it's a free tool, we should point that out. I could suggest sending that out to the board soon, because I know how busy everyone is, some people might want to prioritize and then do it real soon, some people could maybe wait, you know, a while until, you know, as long as it's done before or whatever agenda is set. But if you'd like, I could get that out even this week and then people could then do it at their meeting.
I have, my gut reaction to that is that I would, I would want to kind of have a sense of when we're going to, we have a retreat. I'm worried that if somebody did the tool, did the survey like this week, and somebody waited two months, they might be evaluating very different things.
That's a good point. Things can change a lot if you wait.
Somebody might have this meeting as their most recent memory, and someone might have that sort of meeting.
That's a good point. I was thinking maybe like at the first of the year or something.
Yeah.
Might be a good time to think about it, I don't know.
I would like to think about it in terms of how it winds up with the meeting down in Madison.
But the, but the mention.
Yep, and either, either being able to do this before then so that we can go there with ideas of what we can improve on, or do this shortly after so we can identify some risks and weaknesses or a topic we really want to dive into further, but I think the timing of that convention would make sense to factor into planning this, but I do think we should do it.
And now that you say that, I almost think that is what we did last year. But yeah, maybe, maybe what, maybe Joe and I can figure out, first of all, look at the calendar, figure out when we did this last year, come up with a proposal, you know, more or less when we would have it, and we can have it on our agenda at the next meeting to actually schedule that, and then once it's scheduled, we can, Joe, we can alter the survey tool. Does that make sense to everybody? Any objections? All right. Great. Next up, we have a review of extracurricular staff contract requests. This is an informational document. I like looking at, a good reminder of all the great activities going on, it's kind of fun to see all the things that we're hiring people to coach and advise our kids on. Any questions or discussion on the extracurricular staff requests? All right. Finally, we have items related to next meeting dates, board committees, and reports. Next, no, this, tomorrow is the WASD regional meeting at the Florian Gardens in Claire. If you're planning to attend, don't forget. We have our regular school board meeting, November 10th here at 5:45. There will be no special school board meeting in November, and schools will be closed on November 24th through 28th for Thanksgiving break. Any questions related to next meeting dates, board committees, and reports?
I'm going to hear folks, I will start going tomorrow night, hang on, I'm going to make, I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
So we'll go to the pre-conference? All right, thanks everybody for having me there, unfortunately this year, but thanks to everybody who's going. Yes, go ahead. You want to say something? Okay, I don't understand the motion to adjourn then.
I just recently, just before meeting, got a note from Nathan Fayer. I have on behalf of Norway for a longtime science teacher, Warren Cool, and Cool Drive was extremely successful. I don't know any details about who did it and how it's all done or where it's all going, but I was really impressed with the effort.
Thank you. All right, we have had a motion to adjourn, so we'll send it to you. Thanks everybody for being here.